Of the committee first. So we'll go around and introduce the members of the committee. So councillor Martin Cole, Chair of the committee.
I'm councillor King, Vice Chair of the Labour Committee and Member for Hillfields.
Councillor Kaido, Member for Slough.
I'm councillor Abby Finch, Commissioner Central.
I'm councillor James Crawford, Member for Bishopstone and Ashedown.
Councillor Tim Coates, Coats of Hainault and Wurkridge Park. I'm Mr Shala, Councillor for Stoke-on-Trent.
Is he also councillor for Ashedown?
Great, welcome. Safety information, okay. The emergency evacuation procedure is if we hear the alarm, which we're not expecting, we should exit via the main entrance calmly, going through the lobby and at the main door, go right down the ramp and assemble in front of the cathedral. Thank you. So apologies for absence and substitutions.
I guess we have an apology from councillor Tate. Unfortunately, she's on my line, it was to remain to find a substitute substitution.
Okay, we wish her a good day. Back to your health soon. And the executive director for Gruff Regeneration, sorry, sorry, hang the palm. Is sending apologies because he couldn't be here due to a rival super event. He should have obviously brought us this, but instead we welcome the executive director of the assets. Thank you. For the agenda, does anyone have any declarations of interest? Okay, that's it. We have a minute of the last meeting. Oh, there's a note, but there was an error found under item 11, finance in the minutes.
I guess that's, I unfortunately made an error in noting the amount of variance which we were making a suggestion for. I've taken note of it and I'll be corrected for the final version.
Okay. Has everyone, is everyone happy that they are otherwise a correct record of what happened in the last meeting? I'm ready to send. If I propose something or something, that's the record of the last meeting? Thank you. That's great. So I shall be signing again. Matters arising from the meeting. We've got actually five actions we're ahead of to vote. So I want to make sure we update people on those actions. Firstly, there's a public forum item regarding plant-based council initiatives and catering, which we promised to return. There is a draft report coming for that. It will be coming back to the Chair and Vice Chair in the first place to get ready for committee and to consider that. So I can confirm that we'll be coming back to committee, it's just not really yet. Secondly, it was suggested by a member on the councillor's floor that given the variance on capital, slightly spent on our capital budget, could that be used for funding treatments relating to an item we had in that meeting? That has been passed to the finance officers and the finance subcommittee to be considered. I'm glad to say. However, I should note that at the moment, the entire capital program within the council is under review, which is frustrating because it's held up so long. I would like to see here at the committee till we know what happens at the end of that review. But that's because of the shortfall and the budget sort of issues being dealt with by the councillors financially, which we've got right. But we'll get a response from them in due course. Quite rightly, consumers expressed over the webcast in the meeting answered up the last meeting. I share that concern. We've got eight times more decision-making meetings than under the cabinet system, but arrangements are being put in place. They will be, we'll be getting a position paper or report on how that can be dealt with by democratic services and we'll have a response and forecasted as soon as possible. And, you know, I regret it as well because I'd like this to be widely available. But thank you for attending and filming in the absence of that. That's very helpful. Fourth item, councillor King wanted to make sure the members of the committee were briefed on how decarbonisation was being dealt with strategically by the council assistance approach, as I said in a minute, which yes, we should have that. And we are making sure that there will be a document prepared and we'll get a briefing back on that in due course because we do want to know that what the council does is joined up, of course. I just think it hadn't ever been voted on before, but now it will be, so that's progress. And then finally, a member did, councillor Tate, comment on the issue of dropped collections due to presentation issues by, in other words, when a household puts forward their material for collection, it isn't presented, sometimes it isn't collected because of not being in the right format or I think the mixed materials or someone plodding in top there recently. And there is an update on collections in the quarter one performance report. That is on our agenda. So we are going to get an update on making sure we have reliable and thorough collection services. Okay, so that's the actions came from the minutes. Hope those are all helpful. Thanks officers for making sure they're all followed up. So chairs announcements. I know there's concern over the number of items on the agenda. I already referred to the capital program review that's holding up one item, whatever you want to see. I think five different senior people in the council know I wanted to get that resolved and get that here in terms of how we can invest in decarbonising. And that's on its way. And there's a really genuine procurement obstacle that we'll hear about, which is delaying a report on how we purchase local green electricity, local renewable power. And it's proven more complex because I think it's more ambitious and from what we know, what we hope, it's actually quite innovative and sophisticated way. We want to make sure we buy electricity locally, we want to support local generation, not just by ourselves, but by communities. That report is on its way, but because of procurement rules, we're having to find a way around them to support the local community-based generation. So that's on its way as well. But I'm sorry, it hasn't been resolved yet because we want news on that and we want to enable the committee to discuss that and make a decision on that. So that's on its way. And just to remind the members, we do have some briefings on some of these items to follow this public meeting of the committee. So public forum, we do have items for the public forum.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Of course.
Yeah, thanks for giving us that. And I'm saying this constructively, but yeah, when I saw the agenda, I was quite disappointed. And thanks for your explanation. But as I said, it's a bit disappointing as well. We don't meet very often. How often do we have meetings? Once a week, once a quarter maybe, is it? So we don't meet very often. And I think we're all here to get things done.
Of course.
So it was a bit, yeah, it was a bit disappointing just to see two items tonight for noting. I just wonder, I can't remember if I've seen a forward plan for this.
Yes, there was a forward plan because, but I mean, there's more to go in it because we had six months of forward plan. And as you know, we currently have 28 days of forward plan under the cabinet system. So we now have six months and we've got nineteen throughout this February, I believe. And it will be updated, which members will be feeding into in the near future. And both of you, two of you were founding holders under the last one. You didn't all have items every cabinet meeting. But this time, one of our items is our performance, which we've not actually had to this committee. So it's the first time we've considered that. I'd love for there to be more things ready soon because we do want to make this and we want to continue the ambition. And there is a response to a public forum item. I know we had two questions. If I can just jump to that, councillor Alexander asked the same question. There is a written response. I hope we find that helpful. We want to make sure things are ready and that we want the committee to have a chance to make those decisions. And I wish they were ready sooner, but capital, capital delays because of the shortage we've inherited and procurement regulation that's set by government are holding up at least two items. That would have hopefully.
If I can say, the next meeting is, so the cycle was every eight weeks?
Yeah.
The outside was a strategy resource which is every four weeks. And we're visiting the committee meeting on the nineteenth of December, that's the next one, which is getting, making sure we have a committee meeting before Christmas.
That's right, sooner, yes, sooner than eight weeks. And at least one of the items I thought will be there because it wasn't early today. Yeah, yes, we want to make sure things can be progressed. So we do have a public forum. There were two questions tabled, sorry, more than two, three questions actually. And a statement, but I don't see either of the authors of the questions and statements here. So those are in the papers that are available online from Suzanne Audrey and from councillor Alexander.
Technically, I did submit a statement, but I think councillor's covered it, sorry.
Okay, well, if you look at the questions, the question about the program, that was by councillor Alexander, he's right there. But there is a response, so I hope that's helpful. And I would have, you know, taken any follow-up if we'd.
Jumping, apologies, you sent a statement in, sorry if that's been used. I'll pick that up and make sure that it hasn't been missed.
Yeah, can we, where the correct address to send it to?
I'll chat with you, I'll automatically make sure.
Yeah, kind of, there is a format and an address, so hopefully everyone knows that. But we'll make sure it's done. Okay, so we're noting that those questions and the statement were put. They will all get the written response, so I hope that's helpful. Now this is shut down, last one, so I'm excited. So the agenda item eight is the period five, in other words, the fifth month of the financial year, finance forecast in the report. So it is for noting, but it's an opportunity to ask any questions about the finances relevant to this, the scope of this committee.
Sorry, we're jumping straight to front of something.
Have I missed, I'm sorry, this because I'm using.
You mishap the agenda.
Sorry, we have a, we have a quarterly performance progress, sorry. Yeah, yes, sorry, item seven, I don't know how I said that. The quarterly performance progress, what I just mentioned, which is the first time we've had progress reports on page fourteen, the document, and it is the first quarter of the municipal year. So we'll go to that, we're gonna, we have a brief introduction on that.
Yeah, sorry, hi, my name is Cam, I'm currently the force advisor for Gruff and regen directorate, also supporting this committee. Just to begin by saying that the actions and metrics presented here are taken from the current twenty four twenty five business plan. And we felt on the want to best let remake this committee. Also to add to that, it is acknowledged that these are legacy from previous administration and will be made down the members over the coming months to agree a new corporate strategy. And this group will also be able to influence which actions and metrics come to this committee each quarter. So that's a process which is currently being devised, firstly ruled out over the coming months. Fresh to say that.
Thank you.
So can I ask you, look at page fifteen, keep points of note alongside appendix two or page eighteen and then to ask any questions.
Looking at page fifteen, does anyone have any queries or questions for the members? Which is the number of business plan actions that are on track or complete? The number of priority metrics and data that are better or on target? And the city outcomes and data that are better than one year ago in terms of annual progress?
Chair.
Yes, sure.
Just a quick, I guess, question and point. When we were agenda setting, we did say we were going to try to get in some additional metrics regarding Bristol West and the collection situation. I mean, I might, I can't see them there. I assume we've got Ken here, which he might be able to give us a verbal update. I think it's important the committee does track the performance with Bristol West. Have we maybe been a problem? We've been told the solution has been mounted, but I know that problem is still pretty bad at the moment. I mean, many streets are still dropping drops in my ward. I suspect, as we saw the data last time, it's probably the same in your ward. So I think as a committee, we need to stay on top of that.
Yeah, absolutely right. And I asked for that to be followed up, I should say, I can, so if you go to paragraph seven of the report, it picks up that very point. Since we have the information report, you know, it's true, we've inherited the situation, things are trying to put them right, resources to be put back into service, but yes, it's not perfect yet. I believe it has considerably improved, but do we want to, do we want to jump to that? Paragraph seven, or should we?
I mean, that's useful. I'm wondering if we can begin to somehow create a metric around that, if we can track. That's really useful, I think, sorry, I missed that. So that's really useful, thanks for that. But perhaps in the future, is there a way we can include that in the metrics? Because I think like, probably tracking that metrics are pretty important one for our residents, whether they've been, been to recyclings, collected and not. It's a pretty fundamental thing that council should try and, where should we get rights?
Yeah, you're right. As we just said, there's an opportunity, as Cam said, there's an opportunity to review what we've got. The metrics that were being used, they didn't cover that. And yet we knew there was a problem, so we had that report in September to say, let's be open, there has been a problem and we've got data about that, we've got the update here. But when we sit down and look at it, let's consider a way of saying, is it the right thing to be measuring in future? Because it's the thing we should give our attention to. We want the reliable, we want the sense, so, you know, we want things like recycling to improve, we want drop streets not to be a problem.
And I think also just where we put this figure on drop streets, which is really useful, it looks like it's going in the right direction, which is, do we go back to those drop streets infected, sort of two days later, are there drop drops and there's no return? I mean, there's quite a difference there. Is this by the day or is missed in totality?
So the service level agreement with Bristol West is that they should return to a drop road the following day. When we were at the peak of the problems, they would have gone back maybe a weekend or they would have gone back two days because of the scale of the challenge they're facing. You know, we have to be honest that some roads were repeatedly missed and they weren't gone back to, but now that we're at a place where the service is moving in the right direction, we would envisage that the service would be picked up the next day. That said, if we experience a bad Monday, historically, we've always allowed that to ripple through the week, but then it always means that a Thursday, a Friday service, such as Manchester, my ward, and councillor Dudd's area, actually was, you know, getting more impacted more regularly. So actually, do we decide to actively say, we'll collect this on the following Saturday? Or we move, trying to collect it the next day? That would be under extreme circumstances, just to stop that sort of ripple through the whole week, because then you're impacting every day, even maybe on the Tuesday, you could clear everything and then you go back to the Monday when you can ensure that the collections happen elsewhere, so.
I mean, that was such a important, and in your view, do you think that this improvement is now sustainable?
Bristol West have put more resources in and they are, I think I described it as they were trying to put out fires all the time when they were at the peak of it. Now they're at a point where the service is still fragile, to be honest, but they are actively trying to manage it. And then it's about managing the service and getting the crews back in and driving the performance up. So they're putting out fires now and it's focusing in on the service delivery. So we will have hiccups, you know, and until we've had a period, a long period of stability, we, you know, it's going to be a bit fragile. That's the way I would describe it.
That was really useful. If we can make sure we just have that, I think, going forward for each meeting. Just if you see that, that that improvement is sustained, that would be good.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Do you want to go back to, there are a number of topics in the report and obviously in our, in our performance dashboard. Do you want to focus on any others? So we've got, we've got fly tips, street cleaning, litter. And supporting the heat connection, the heat network, I'm sorry, delivery, the heat network. So there's information in paragraph four about the first connection to the maintenance of the heat network and then additional connections in the existing, in the existing two networks. Oh, sorry, yeah. Carry on.
It was just one of the areas where we're a bit behind is recycling, the recycling rates. And I wondered, I don't know if there is budget that can be put towards that, but yeah, I get a feeling that there's maybe a certain amount of uncertainty around what comes to the recycling, how to sort it, and what needs to go away, that sort of thing. So sort of a public information campaign to sort of show people what actually happens to recycling, what can go in, what boxes, and encourage people to, you know, recycle more would be a good thing if there is budget for it.
That's a really good point and it's something that I started to think about in terms of the sort of next steps for the service, that we want reliable service and we want improvement. And the rate has been good for a core city for a number of years, but it's not been improving particularly. And the pressures on it are extra cardboard means there's twice as much to accommodate in the same vehicles that were made to collect what we had five, ten years ago. So we want, we want to encourage participation, we want to have the capacity to deal with that participation and we want to get stuff out of the bin that shouldn't be in the bin, like food waste, like plastic materials. And as you said, where does it go? On the Bristol Waste website, there's some really helpful sort of guidance on how much is collected and the market it goes to, because getting it to market helps pay for the service. It helps pay for what Bristol Waste do. And actually, that's a really, really important good news story. It's not been taken away, I mean, there are cities where, or authorities where they're making arrangements with the company to take it away, the company takes it away and it turns up in a field abroad not being recycled, for instance. We process it, it's sorted in the street, which actually gets us quite high quality material and that material goes to market. And it's bulked up and sold to get the best price. And so we rely on that quality and that price to support a good service. And we need to tell that story and we, you're right, we need to get instructions for households. And I know it's been quite a while since anyone got anything delivered saying, remember this goes in this, this goes in that. Slim your waste, put your food waste in the food recycling bin was the last campaign, which was quite a few years ago, actually. And before that, there was a quite intensive program of outreach in Hertfordshire that doubled the food waste uptake and won an award for Bristol Waste, which, you know, we need more of that in more of the city. So I hope we can, and it should be taken account when we look at, you know, the contract going forward and the budget available and how the service might be redesigned to make it easier, to make it more effective, to make it more reliable and then to get more from marketing. Because we want that material to go around the economy, we don't want it to be left in a black bin or of, you know, a refuse bin. And we don't want it to be incinerated in my view, we want it to be used as materials quite valuable. And the cardboard, you know, the plastic and so on, they are, they have value, so we need them in the recycling. So we've got to get that message out. Well, when we come to look at it, I mean, we'll have a discussion in a briefing later on today that actually talks about that promotion has to go alongside the service. You have the service and you promote the use of the service and you explain it well. And that's how you get participation. So that's a very important point and we should come back to that.
Yeah, I'm just sort of seeing it's mentioned in the report, fly, about fly tipping. And that's probably something the committee's not, probably had a proper update on our enforcement actions and how the team, how that is doing. So fly tipping finds will put up to a legal maximum recently. So you would expect potentially fly tipping to go down if that happened, but obviously it's gone up slightly. So I think the idea about increasing it was that potentially provide more finance and capacity, the more enforcement. And it's obviously slightly, the level of fly tipping slightly increased. So it'd be good to try to understand what the push factors are around that and then also there's the question around the littering fines as well, so potentially we could increase those more. So it'd be good to potentially house some of our enforcement teams and how they are performing, but it's obviously not in this report.
Sure, sure. And yes, and there is work to do on that, so that's a good thing. And councillor King and I had a briefing as Chair and Vice Chair, but one of the things about that, we were told about the enforcement, about level of fines, about the trends. And as you said, members, have all councillors been briefed, not just this committee, but have all councillors been briefed on how it's been attended to? Because there is, there is a season of vehicles, bike owners, rep traders who do systematic fly tipping. There's enforcement of litter, there's enforcement, identification of who's causing the fly tips. There are more cameras available to monitor sites and fly tipping hotspots. And yeah, it's disappointing this matter and I don't think Bristol's always told the story of what it's doing about it, potentially compared to one or two other authorities in the region and get their story out there, they've caught someone or they've claimed someone. But Bristol has been doing that and we'll get a newsletter to all members, we've told them, we'll get a newsletter to all members about the work of the street cleaning and enforcement team. And hopefully when we get that, we'll know if there's anything this committee might need to then take further.
Just to follow, councillor Dudd said that it'd be meaningful for us to get a future report. I also noticed we've got a target here, and I think I mentioned this in the agenda briefly, that the wording of the title is slightly perverse. But the wording actually states to reduce the number of incidents of fly tipping that are reported and removed. And actually, that's a slightly perverse thing that the council actually is in their interest to meet the target to not remove the fly tipping if it really happened. And I'm sure that's not what it means.
Yeah, we have to look at that.
But there is a problem of fly tipping not being removed from certain parts of council land, and I think particularly housing land is always the slowest, the most difficult to get removed. So I think potentially for the future, getting some figures on how quickly we remove fly tipped items, getting some figures on prosecutions, sounds good. So maybe it's something we can look at a little bit more as a committee, if that is our area. So I think actually that's what really does affect some communities to be badly, some parts of my ward are fly tipped every day. I have one area where I can guarantee you every forty eight hours, some fly tips. So I've just been, from my best friend, who said, thank you very much, Mr City Councillor, it has now been collected, we should keep the two fly tips because it's been fly tipped twice that week. So we actually came along and got two for the price of one. So it is a real issue in quite a few of our wards. And so knowing the prosecution levels would be good, knowing how fast we are collecting the fly tips will be good. And yes, monitoring the amount, because I think there was a concern that fly tipping did increase when we bought in the charging for the building waste. That's what I heard. It'd be interesting to see if there was actually any facts behind that. That was coming out of parks, in particular, if I would fly tipping in the bins, which was perverse. I've got to be honest, I spotted it myself, people actually going up to parks, bins, putting building waste in it. And I just thought, what is the point? But we're looking into the park and filling the bin with the building waste. The effort someone went to, as if like, look, I have fly tipped, it seemed perverse to me. But people do sometimes behave in slightly unusual ways. And I think it's just knowing, are there sometimes unintended consequences or decisions? I know that's not really the worst anyway, so I hope that that won't be an issue. And it would just be interesting to know sometimes if there's fact behind Ruback. Sometimes, you know, your day to day is not everyone else's day to day. So it's just useful. So it's just useful, I think, for us to look into that more in detail, maybe not just at the end of the following meeting, so we can develop that, uh, quite a good report. And then maybe look at also other councils going to try to reduce fly tipping. I think that would be, uh, I think it is a flight of all kinds of cases.
Yeah, so prevention is, you're finally right, prevention is the first, the first thing we want to achieve. But clearing it, getting it, or clearing it, and, and catching the people while they're doing it. And there are more cameras out now, we've just sort of heard about that. I want that story to go out, that there are cameras watching, so.
I mean, there's a lot of issues, there's people doing it who shouldn't be doing it. You just can't be bothered to go to the, uh, go to the recycling service. And then there are the commercial fly tippers out there.
Yes.
Because actually it's big money, and although it's good to hear the fines are out of matter, we know in reality the amount of money they can make through fly tipping, it can be astronomical. And, uh, and the fines often can't match the amount of money someone can make. So I think it's sort of trying to work out what we're doing to stop that more commercial start fly tipping. Which also, of course, undercuts the legal, uh, waste carriers and, uh, and their work.
Good to say, I was going to say, when they introduced the D O Y waste, we didn't see an increase in the cost of it, because that was positive.
So again, people were worried, but actually the, the outcome wasn't.
So we didn't see it, but as you say, that, that's been rescinded now, so that's, that's a new thing.
Yeah.
And it's worth to state to the committee now, the big tidy initiative has continued, um, and it continues to have a strong focus on, on the housing, on the housing areas, on housing estates, there is resourcing.
What they're funding, they, they are.
Yeah, so a few hedge areas, but to not only clean, but also remove, so that is how we're, our approach. But as you say, it's, it fly tipping is, um, very regular, uh, you remove, and then it's also to target hard these sites, of course, which was quite nice to, and given the side of the, the approach to trying to stop the fight.
And, and will there be a business case for us to potentially try to put more resources into enforcement? Because I know that is difficult, for the time where officers could go out and go through every item of fly tipping, to, to look for addresses. But it's amazing how many types of people move their addresses when they start their flight tip. I, I myself found at least one person prosecuted, because they unbelievably left an address, uh, and that led us catching the fly tip. Uh, so, um, I mean, it can be done, but of course it's having that capacity within the system to go out and do that.
Nice. Yeah, and, and vehicles have been, have been seized, and, you know, in a way we want to get that story out. But the real story is, you use a legal disposal, you know, you, you use someone who's legal, because then you are legal. Because it, it is your base if you place someone to remove it, and if they fly tip it. And people don't always realise that, um, and they're taking a risk, businesses and individuals, if, if they use that. So, but apparently there, some of the waste criminals don't come to reclaim their vehicles too often, because that means they're, they're in it. It was their vehicle and that was their business. Or their, or the vehicle isn't sometimes worth the protection. So you had a question?
Yeah, I was similar to councillor Kent's question, while prevention, um, whether we're actually engaging with perpetrators? And why you've done it, if it's because they're the information, and then obviously what Councillor Finch said about that, um, that the information campaign will be helpful, and we could see where needs targeting, whether it's businesses, the vehicles. Yeah, that was it.
Sure, yeah, yes, and promote the use of legal businesses. Try and find, you know, businesses can be made legal if they start to follow the rules. Although there are some criminals who just, just don't want to.
Okay, I guess from a response perspective, we would proactively engage with offenders. I think through community payback is an interesting, um, relationship with offenders who are working. We, we proactively work with, um, partner with the probation service to look at meaningful activity, uh, to work with offenders who are repairing the harm in the context of fly tipping stroke, um, community works, which might be repaired in terms of all clear, yeah, so in terms of that, there's not, there is, that happens and that engagement, and obviously it's to demonstrate the effect and also the costs. So I think, you know, I think we can continue to work with probation on that.
Yeah, to, to put things right, yeah, and to discourage reoffending. And one of the interesting stories, but, and one of the things I, I passed on some things, that's awarded councillor to, to Ken and her committee, is that, you know, we've been thanked for some of the improvements we've made by some of their, there were us enforcement and regulation, you know, finding regulations that get waste stored better, presented better, keeping streets tidy. Um, yeah, and it's quite, quite nice to get thank yous, saying, oh, the council's got something right this time, and places like it there. Sort of the old city, Gloucester Road, and elsewhere are being, are being made easier to keep here by removing big overflowing trade bins next to which people fly to. Because there are, there's a big bin, I'll just stuff it in there, it'll be, it's full, I'll leave an extra. So now we've removed quite a lot of those pretty badly managed trade box bins, and got the waste presented in a much more respectable way. Um, actually, streets are tidier as well. Sorry, you had a question, sir?
Um, yeah, I was just going to ask, so the new CCTV, or the recent store CCTV cameras that have, that have gotten, gone in our city, they're, they're a fantastic asset, and then, you know, there's, there's some building to remove the results from that. But from what I understand, it's really inexpensive to have them moved as well. So is there potential for, um, for them to be circulated around, put into other people's wards where the, there's hotspots? So if, though, we can get those assets to work out for us and, and share some of that, the benefit around, so some of the other wards, when in time, is it appropriate time to move it?
So inexpensive.
Inexpensive, yeah.
For some, some effects.
Relatively, compared to the benefit that you could achieve for it.
Definitely, I think, I always, what I would always say to the, our enforcement officers as well as the, the council staff, and also to, to members, you know, the intelligence in the community through hotspots and feeling that they, you know, they've got somewhere to go to, to report it, to help us identify those hotspots, to then deploy where, where the need is. And it's really important that, as officers, when identifying hotspots, we configure it into enforcement team and the, the operation centre, because the, the feeds from the, um, councils do go into the monitoring centre. If there is the availability, we might find a connectivity. So, um, the answer would be yes, it should be, and, um, yes, it is relatively, um, costly, related to cost of effort in context against the cost of the impact of the.
Yeah, I mean, it's really great, because, because money was, money was spent to get those cameras, so they go to.
To the county home office.
Yeah, yeah, brand, the brand, and, and some are over. So our hotspot information as councillors, and yeah, all councillors, I will get that, get a newsletter telling them that, they, they can report. And one of those hotspots could be a target for, a location for one of the cameras that are now available. And, and they, they are being used already.
Well, they should be, they should be static as they should remain, so if, if hopefully the problem would be moved, monitored, and then the camera moved to another area, that should be the level of your play on a six-foot base.
So. Um, any of the other issues, or more, any, any more issues in the performance report? Oh, I, I was going to say, I was delighted, item five, it says six hundred thousand pounds that Bristol has got from the West of England by an authority to deliver the Ecological Emergency Action Plan. And what that means is to manage more council land for nature, to enhance and repair nature on our land. We've got funding, and I was really delighted to see that. And I was lucky enough just to, today, to be at the West of England Nature Recovery Conference. And the partnership there is, is doing lots of good work, and clearly, all, all the authorities in the west of England and North Somerset will be enough to do more and to help, help get funding in, get commercial money for biodiversity net gain, get, get sources of grants, I mean, to actually manage more land for nature. But it's great that Bristol's able to make its contribution that way, um, because there's a lot that needs to be done there. Were there any other questions on that? So it is, it is an item to know, but we'll come back to it and we will look at the metrics. And I hope we'll be able to see if it's appropriate to develop better, or more vertikal metrics to focus on the issues that matter most to residents and across the city. Okay, so that, we finished out that thing, Miss Mill. Please, thank you very much for bringing that, because it's really important. And obviously that was quarter one, but we want to know what's happening in quarter two already, and then quarter.
Yeah, quarter two's, the, the data's pretty much almost there, and I, I think we discussed it before, so that, but trying to potentially, if we could get this a bit quicker.
Yeah, yeah, we want it, we want it to be as, as timely as it can be, so we can move, you know, make progress and focus on where it's getting.
And just also to finish on, if anyone has any questions, just send me a direct message, I'm happy to.
Sure, and can I just think, um, so, uh, the basic report is available online. People can access it without any additional software, even though it's very clever, uh, yeah.
Absolutely, yes, they just click the link on there, it should go straight there. And, and again, if anyone needs any kind of assistance with how to filter things or move around it, just let me know.
Sure, sure, great. Thank, thanks for that, thanks for all the contributions, sir. Um, it's really, really important, we keep an eye on that. And, and that it does, you know, it does help us to, to sort of target what we want to target and, and celebrate when, when things are achieved, so. Um, so the next, yeah, the next item is item eight, which is the, the latest financial report to our committee. So these are being tailored to the work of this committee, um, to make sure we're up to date, how our capital and our revenue is being spent, and how it's doing against the numbers it should be at. We can, uh, oh, sorry, maybe you were going to give a brief introduction, shall we? Thank you, thank you for coming with us and preparing.
Not at all, um, so, I guess I should say, um, so I guess the, the meat of this report is the, the appendix, um, where we lay out the budgets, um, for those areas within the region, those committees broken down by the three separate divisions. Um, and so it's in fact there on the broader pressures against growth regeneration, which may be about homelessness. Um, and then move on to our risks and opportunities. So simply the risks are likely overspent at the end of the year, and opportunities are likely underspent. So we've got a bit of text on that, I think, and I, or others can talk to those, if the councillors would like to, normal. Um, I've articulated a bit of text on what those thematic risks and opportunities equate to. And then the final section, um, goes through the three capital programmes, and like, and the list of all those.
So the most important thing, we know that both our capital and our revenue are on track, which means not having a variance, although the variance can be a saving, not just for no time. Does anyone have any questions on those, the, like, the figures or the risks are not changing?
Sorry, I've been very boring. Um, one, that's very useful, but secondly, I think a column has gone missing, uh, on section B, because we've got Bristol Waste Contract Inflation listed, then we've got Bristol Waste Contract Inflation listed, and we've got Bristol Waste Contract Inflation listed, and then we've got Bristol Waste Contract Inflation. So, but, so this is all, yeah, page twenty-four. What's missing is what bit of the Bristol Waste contract that refers to. So I've got a feeling we sort of, I've dropped a column. Um, perhaps in future we need one extra column just to specify which element that has to do with it. Uh, I've got a feeling it was there, we looked at it last time.
Yes.
Because I remember we were discussing elements, and I think when it's going to get published, the column has gone missing.
Okay, yes, apologies for that.
No, I think it was there at gender setting, because I was discussing different things, but now I'm looking at it and I can see it.
We should, we should know which bits of the contract.
Yeah.
That's a question. I, I think what we, I was saying, in the paper to be produced, the column has gone AWOL.
Yeah, because the numbers are, yeah, they're different things, the numbers are there, but.
But, but on that, that, obviously there is sort of about a one point three million, uh, risk, as it were, regarding Bristol Waste, um, contract. And this was, of course, produced before the budget, which does see about eleven and a half percent cost on employers regarding, um, tax, which one is it, yeah? Thank you.
Employees' National Insurance, because it affects employment.
Yeah, and, and what's that?
Services.
A- as a council, uh, our, our main cost is staff, and with Bristol Waste, I would think probably at least half their cost, if not more, is staff. Um, so that's going to be an additional cost, again, that we have not, um, uh, anticipated. Uh, where are you, Mister Chair, Chairman, regarding negotiations with regarding next year's budget? Because clearly, trying to get money sent with Bristol Waste is unlikely to occur. It's not without having a significant impact, as we saw on the elections.
On, on the specific issue of employers' national insurance going up. Um, am I right, cases being made, certain sectors are being promised in the event of a rebate?
Yes, so my, my understanding is that, um, like, the council is going to receive additional funding from central government to make up the national insurance contribution that we're going to be paying. Um, it's being debated by, by, by organisations like Bristol Waste, but also, so we're not quite certain. Or the impact, but the impact may be that now.
So, so I thought the council was exempt, but it's going to be done via a rebate mechanism, is it?
If it's in-house compared to if it's arms-length, an arms-length company, which we have a particular company delivering that service for us, which obviously we set up, as the council set up. Um, it's a bit different from where contracting some private service provider. So it's, it's a question of which category does it fall into? And, and the sectors, like, you know, GPs are talking about it, but they're, they're a private sector, effectively delivering the service to the energy. But, but our waste company is, is Bristol's company. So, am I right, that the shareholder is looking at that, or the, you know, the ownership of the company? We're, we're worried about what they do for us, they're worried about how that company's doing as a, the shareholder of, you know, the owner of it. And that's the scratching resources, and, sorry, you, is this related to that?
Yeah, in general, is there, is there any update on pay, pay negotiations with the company?
Which is obviously related.
Pay, pay things, due in my mind, wasn't it?
Yes, and so I didn't think that the MD of Bristol Waste today, so there's active engagement with the union, promotion to the table. Um, so there has been conversations, they're not in a agreed form at the moment. And of course, this was the, the budget announcement, I mean, last week, it obviously added to the position to be considered before we can get any settlement, um, but there has been engagement, the new MD, which Williams, who started, I think, three weeks ago, um, is engaged in that process. So I was encouraged this morning to hear the progress today. So, um, going on, we're only on the seventh of November, and the revenue cycle, um, obviously is that we were, um, we are where we are, but not, not in a settled issue.
And obviously, to get back to your, your other part of your question, um, yeah, I, I want, I want us to know what we can get, you know, in terms of the remit of this committee, we want to get certain services, progress on certain strategies, which aren't necessarily funded, obviously, which we need budget or income or grants, um, for, so I think we'll involve all the members in that, but we haven't got to that stage yet. They're looking, they're busy like reading the budget and looking at what does it mean for councillors in general, what's it mean for Bristol, what's it mean for companies that are for Bristol? Yeah, so there's a lot of considerations, and the final announcement, the actual settlement to local government, and how kind the government is to open authorities, for instance, to authorities with certain pressures, certain, you know, needs. We, we, when will we know that in December?
Middle, middle, no, middle of December, I was, yeah, in December.
Because, because each of these sort of, the, the budget in its sense only has certain relevance to local authorities, and, and that's very quickly sort of tallied up, like in employers' national insurance. But then, but then what settlement we get? And the, you know, the promise, I hope, that we'll, there'll be less competitive chasing of grants to actually do the things we want to do by competing against other authorities, hopefully there'll be less of that, now, and.
Of course, most of our budget is Bristol Waste Contract.
For this committee.
Yes, so, I mean, the danger is, and I understand our temptation is, that an order will go out, say, two percent, say, four percent across, across the board, it's not an unusual, uh, request. Our problem is that if that request was made on our committee, that would inevitably probably have to fall with Bristol Waste Contract. And we saw what an attempt to just make a fairly small saving would not have the effect that that caused.
Yes, that decision caused a lot.
So, we, we need, I guess, I was just saying, uh, where, I guess, I'm trying to ally myself with you when we go into that, for this, for this committee, particularly Bristol Waste. But, um, that any sort of reduction of Bristol Waste Contract could have quite a substantially negative effect, as we've seen. And so, uh, you know, what we really need to do is to see some increase in funding for that contract. And obviously, if the company doesn't get any increase in funding, they will have to cut rooms. And that could have quite a substantial effect, that, we've seen exactly what happened. So we don't want that to be repeated. But we've seen exactly what happened, so we don't want that to be repeated again next year.
No, I agree, and there are other factors too. So we get the best service that we can from it, that it puts money in the most efficient ways to deliver the most efficiency, that we get the income from all the materials, like we were saying earlier, that the costs are as, you know, well managed as they can be. And the enforcement, you know, either yields fines or stops the bad behaviour, it costs us money too, like fly tipping costs us a lot of money, litter picking costs, you know, costs plenty of money. Putting things in refuse bins rather than recycling, it costs us money, or costs that contract money, so that they can provide less for us if they get less recycling. So we need to look at all that, and you're right, so we need to get the best service we can. And thank you for that, you know, people need to support that, obviously. And then we've got, you know, we've got other things we need to do that actually happen when we can help win money for the city. Or get the city league kind of partnership, the joint venture to put the investment in that it's promised and, you know, generate renewable electricity that will help help the energy bills of the council in time. So we're, we've got a relatively spreadable budget with the variances and not spotters in some parts of the council, frankly. In other words, there aren't all the overspendings, but there are also less scope for sales, really. And we're asked to note that, so are there any more questions before? So we've noted that report, we'll be getting regular updates, thank you for bringing that as towards. Because it now means we can keep track of everything the committee's doing quite clearly, in terms of funding. That's the final item on today's agenda, and look forward to the stuff we're going to get next month. And thanks all for consulting.
Can I just jump in for the final matter of business? My apologies to you, Den, I have managed to find your statement. Would you be happy with me emailing that to the committee to make sure it's all made to pass?
Can I have, can I say so?
Yeah, and if you see the public forum, you will see how we addressed that. But had it been more quick, had it been, had it not been here, I would have answered any additional questions if you came up with them. But we'll have a read of that when we share it, thanks for that.
Well, there's our hard copy there, if you want.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much for that.
We've got a little bit, five minutes until our briefing starts, and we'll just have to stretch our legs and then.